7:02, I'm going to call the Dunbar- Dunbar- Board Selectmen to order for Thursday, March 1st, first of the month. All three selectmen are present. The town administrator is present. Corinne, the town secretary is recording for us, is present. Leo Martell, who has got the video. Town officials here, we have the chief of police. And another town, the energy committee.
John Stevens.
And cemetery trustee.
And cemetery trustee.
Okay. Maybe there's a cemetery trustee?
No, but he is a town official.
Town official, yeah. Okay, first thing we have on the agenda, we have some minutes, ladies and gentlemen.
Motion to approve the minutes for February 22nd, the regular meeting minutes as a minute.
I'll second that motion, Chris.
Any discussion? Here, no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Approve.
Oops. Judy Van Colken.
It's 7:00 PM on these.
I would like.
Your tax.
Make a motion on non-public meetings. I make a motion to approve the non-public meeting minutes for February 22nd.
February.
For February 22nd?
Yep.
Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, and I'd also like to make a note that those are sealed.
Correct.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion on those? Corinne, just, there's a, or a few title clarifications, but nothing. Make sure you review them as I sign, you may see one or two small ones.
She usually says it to me so I know what's been changed. And we just do this on public?
I made a motion, both seconded.
Was I right on the RSA or was I wrong?
Yeah, no, I checked it wrong.
Okay.
We referred, we read it correctly, I just put it wrong on the agenda.
I tried some, I'm sure.
An industry public. I will, at least, shut it in there.
You can't have lean, you have to lick it because if she gets hurt, it's on the call. If you get hurt, we're all set.
I mentioned that it was sealed last week.
Yeah. Okay, well, that's been miserably sealed. We're going to open up for public comment. Again, please state your name, if we, as I ask for public comment.
No, thank you.
Sir?
Don Larson, cemetery trustee, also reaps across Dunbar-. The donation boxes are in place in the town office and at the library for next year, and it'll be on December 8th, the second Saturday in December. We'll start at 10 o'clock at the statue on the commons.
Will the meeting, like a supper, like we had this year?
No, not going to do the chili supper.
Okay.
It's so close to Christmas and there's just so much stuff going on, and we've done a pretty good job with our fundraising.
Those, you've been, you've created an endowment.
Yes, working on that. Would like to get it up to about $7,500 by the end of next year.
That's it. Anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay, Linda?
Linda Landry, town clerk. Just checking to see how you folks are doing prep for the election.
I think we made some good progress. We've identified the helpers to help set up.
Okay.
And I've got pro temp selectmen identified, and I think, I think we'll be okay. And the fact that, I think even counters, I've been alerting people that they may want to come votes in the evening to help you out.
Would you please keep me in the loop for that? Because I, because I cannot handle the marked ballot, therefore I cannot be part of the tally.
Understood, but you're just, at the end, you can still seal and all that.
I still have to seal and I still have to do all the reporting, but I can't, I can't be a physical body there.
Understood.
Counting.
Okay.
And the supervisors of the checklist are working on getting a third person, because one of them will not be in attendance.
And, and for the public who's listening, the last day to register a vote for them to participate in the election?
This Saturday.
This coming Saturday. Okay, and you'll be open to accept, to what day?
I will not be here Saturday.
Okay, by Friday you'll be here?
I will not be here Friday. The supervisors, I will no longer be taking voter registrations because I closed at 7:00 this evening.
Okay.
The supervisors of the checklist will be here, they'll be physically here on Saturday from 11:00 to 11:30 to accept voter registration, that's the cutoff.
AM.
AM, yes, that is, that is the deadline.
I was wondering if it would come at night.
Linda, something I didn't bring up when the moderator was in front of us, we had several young people that came in to volunteer to do the counting at the end of our previous election.
How young?
I guess younger than me. But what I was going to say is, did you guys maybe have a chance to reach out to those same people to see if they could help out?
Are they, I have to see if they, they have to be registered to vote, I believe. I have to check into that.
Well, they helped us at the last election, so.
Okay, so that it was people who were already.
I would say, yeah, so I didn't know if you had names from those people or not, if you could reach out to the same people, maybe.
Reach out to them, yes.
I tell you what, during the election too, if those people are regular voters, we can reach out to them as they walk by, say, after, stick around, we can use some help.
Oh, my dear, I've been doing that for years.
I know.
But yeah, it'd be nice to ask my, ahead of time, maybe.
And we'll have Rennie too make an announcement that if anybody's willing to stay and help count after the meeting, because if, you know, we don't start counting until the meeting's over. So, keep it short.
Correct. Okay, anything else?
Thank you, that's all I had so far.
Nothing, just here to observe.
Okay. John, you're on the agenda, so you're coming up.
Okay.
Okay, all right, I'm going to bring it back to the board, and we're going to start right down the agenda, and John, you want to come on up?
Okay.
Vender fees first.
Vendor fees, yeah.
You didn't do John first?
We're going to do the vendor fees.
He is part of that.
He's part of the energy.
Oh, he's part of it, okay.
Did you receive the check already?
I did.
Okay, and John, these are for the table, for the, in advance of the, the Energy Expo. Can I get the right words?
Central Manchester Energy Expo, before.
Okay, okay, so I can make a motion that for RSA 31:95-Bravo: Rule Number 3, paragraph B, that we accept vendor fees in the amount of $50 for the Dunbar Energy Committee specifically for the Energy Expo, August 8:07 to 2018.
And there, there.
I'll second, I'll second. I'll open up for discussion.
There could be, could be more coming in.
Okay, excellent. And last year, I recall, you had a lower turnout because of the weather was in.
Yeah.
I second.
Yes.
Hopefully we get no snowstorms.
We got a little bit, a week later, maybe we get lucky.
Okay, okay, all in favor of accepting the $50 for the.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay.
That will be deposited into their checking account, and that checking account was established with all donations, no taxpayer, don't, fees. So, the energy committee could have some resources to help residents with the energy, I don't know.
Needs.
Needs, yeah.
After the election, I want you to talk a little bit about, next on the agenda, we talked about the Energy Expo itself, and I want to offer at least a marquee on the, I think it'd be the bulletin board on the outside, not the small one, but the major one.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
After the election, we can put that on.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Do you want to talk about it? We have a copy of flyer here.
I guess I would be asking first what are you interested in, so I can play.
Well, just, just, this is, gentlemen, we've got to realize the public watches this, and I just want, you've got an opportunity to sell this program to the public now.
Yes, yes, and, and we, we have it advertised in a lot of different places and whatnot, and also we're putting out signs in about a week and a half or so.
Okay, excellent.
Is this your third or fourth year you've done this?
I think it's the third.
Third year.
I don't know, it all went together.
It originally started as a Dunbar Energy Expo, Energy Fair, right?
Right.
And then we changed that to?
Yeah, 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 we got, got feedback from the exhibitors, you know, the vendors and whatnot, just little pieces here and there, and one of them was, he called it, like, Central Hampshire, for one thing, right? Because I remember when I was putting, putting those bulletin, bulletins out, there were two or three places that I put them in, at Goffstown, Goffstown High School, for instance, was, was that one of the places. And the lady said, oh, yeah, I, we have solar homes, you know, we really like it and whatnot, and we would really like to come, but we see that it's for Dunbar only. And she lives in Goffstown, so she felt she couldn't come, so we had to.
Open it up.
That's what instilled the order to name change.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's good to make people aware of different options they have to save money on their homes.
Right.
Great, well, things, I look forward to having, I think, just to let you know that last year they gave a free light bulb as a walk-in door.
Oh, I missed it last year, but I did go to the one that won.
Thought that was kind of interesting, LED bulbs to the public.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
Complements of Ace Hardware, as I understand.
Correct, correct, yes, and, and this year there will be door, door prices, which are in lieu of space, space rental kind of thing.
Got you.
So, it just, you know, benefits everybody. One of them will be giving away a cellphone charger, solar thing, you know, just that kind of stuff.
Okay, pretty neat.
Yeah, yeah, we are lower on the number of.
Fenders?
Nets that we would like to see, but.
You think it could be more than what you had last year with the snowstorm?
There's going to be about the same number, well, maybe, maybe one or two more, yeah.
Excellent. Okay, well, thank you, John.
And was there a lighting thing that was going on?
No.
No, this is a segue into this next issue.
Okay, there's one issue I want to just bring up here.
So, I'm pretty much, we have just a couple more things for you.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to go ahead and read this, this issue out.
Okay.
And then I'll go from there. This particular person we're talking about lived and worked in California in the early 1970s. He met and married a young lady named Kathy in 1976, and traveled across Canada to settle in New Hampshire. This person currently resides in the very same Dunbar home which he designed in 1982. This person has always been interested in alternative energy, wind, water power, along with energy conservation, and leading to home and energy loss analysis. He retired from a company called Salvania in 2008, and he started outstanding work in Dunbar as a volunteer. This particular person has served as a member of the Dunbar Energy Committee since 2009 to the present. He's been heavily involved in making sure the town continually seeks ways to save energy through energy audits, grants, and lighting upgrades. His commitment to energy savings has led to grants for the Dunbar Elementary School for their solar hot water backup, lighting upgrade, up grants for the town offices, the town library, and exterior lighting in the safety complex, as well as the interior lighting upgrade in the fire department, and recently the much-needed upgrades in the highway garages area. And all this time, he's committed, he's been committing his time in energy to make sure the projects were completed to specifications. Thing is, there's a saying we used to say about him, anything you can do for a kilowatt in the town of Dunbar saves dollars. He's been involved in many other things, namely the old Home Day Committee, the Woodbank, and the Town Hall Restoration. It's volunteer, volunteerism like this, like this particular person that makes Dunbar a wonderful place to live. Therefore, on behalf of the town of Dunbar, the selectmen wish to extend our appreciation to this resident, John Stevens. John, congratulations, we're dedicating town report to you this year.
You know, as I was driving up the hill, I was just putting little pieces together and shit.
Well, congratulations. We actually saved money for the town, we was very close to that.
Yeah, whenever tired, the people we've joined with Salvania for all those years said, John, would you want to pass something on to you, once they've always known about you, and never let John get bored.
For the public, I'm going to say, as you get your town reports, make sure you take a, take a moment to read what, what I just went through, and you can have a nice picture of John, and John, as this you wanted to take, congratulations again.
Thank you.
As we dedicate it.
And?
When more. Do you know that gentleman up here?
I've seen him someplace. So, he's in here.
Tell me when you're ready.
Very soon, I'll say.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you, John, thank you.
So, you can sign it, and he gets the first copy?
Yes.
Now I have to find another pass to open.
Come go away, guys, as I talk.
You're going to get the first copy.
Right on the picture, down below.
You won't get one in the mail.
Well, that's probably a fucking a half, you know.
Hi.
Hi.
I got summoned.
When?
Well, it was in the works for a while, it's classified information.
I understand, because he picked up some of that.
John, I want to say thank you, it's been, I've been working a little over a year with the selectmen, and the thing is, I saw you about a year ago, maybe a year ago, in a few months, and you've been, every time we needed anything, you were there, when it came to lighting, saving money, applying for grants, you were always there for us, thank you.
So, you get the signed copy, the first copy. You'll be days ahead of everybody else, when they get mailed out?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
People will be getting them, they're on tomorrow, Saturday.
And when you said days, I thought, no, that's days ahead, not being dazed. Thank you.
Tom, thanks for all the hard work.
And just keep it coming, good, tough to do.
Well, it's kind of tedious work, and it's nice to have somebody that's willing to do it.
And not only, you oversee it too, that was the good thing.
So, you will have to go through this again at town meeting?
Oh.
Just, just so you're prepared.
I have to get them front so they can present it to you.
Yeah, thank your family for giving us the information to help write that up.
Yes.
Oh, they were in on this, seriously?
Yeah, absolutely. Just a short time.
Was my wife in on it?
Absolutely.
He kept a good secret.
Yeah, he's in California at the moment, dealing with very difficult situations.
Okay, well, was he at the town meeting?
And as far as the lighting's on, I think we got it resolved. That's what you were looking for the other night, remember?
Yeah.
Thanks. Pleasure working with you.
What's your first name, Dave?
Joe.
Joe?
Same last name.
Joe's last name?
Michelle.
Is Michelle the same last name?
Light.
Right?
Light.
L-I-G-H-T?
Light, yes.
I like how everybody points the ceiling, describing my last name.
Michelle.
Michelle.
Thank you for attending.
Thank you so much for coming.
Okay, now we got to continue on.
Thanks, John, you're all set.
Yeah.
I didn't know what you'd come.
All right, let's go to town business, which, town business slash mailbox.
It's a good night, because we left so late.
All right, first thing in the mailbox, we've got a currency copy of the memo that went out from the chief of police in the highway department, the road agent, concerning weight restrictions on our road.
I had a question for the chief on this. Has the town approved the fees on those?
We put that out a couple of years ago, it was a, it was a redo of a letter that Jeff already had out, so.
I didn't know if the select board had agreed to those, because if they haven't, it's kind of like those ordinances that hadn't gone through the legislative body.
I don't think they, that has to go through legislative body, that, it's under, isn't it under a law?
I believe it is, I believe you have the authority to do that.
Okay.
But that, that predated me, that was, we updated and did a joint, it was, it was a joint. I understand there's some urgency to get that out this week because of the weather changes, stuff like that, but the thing is, for the future, I think it might be worthwhile to have, to do a little background research on to make sure we're, we're sure to be with the blind.
Do you want to keep it?
I like to make a hire.
Yeah, good, information in.
And Lean, can we, can we make sure to post that on the bulletin board too, just so that people can read it coming by?
Yeah, can you send this me electronically?
Yeah, you can.
Because you gave, they're hand-delivered.
It's on, it's on our Facebook page, and there's a link to that letter on Facebook. And there's a, on a webpage right now, there's a big thing, so it's posted. It's all even on the Dunbar way page.
They post them manually too, but I just think to have that up on the board, okay, might be.
Makes sense, yeah, I will do that.
Okay.
Especially when it comes to the fees, if somebody gets hit with them.
Okay, yeah, it is on the website, but all it says is the weight limit, so that's a good idea, put that up there.
Can I ask the chief one more question? All of our town ordinances, the ones we went through in the spring for sound and all the other ones, those are all approved by the select or an official now.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I'm asking, those, we signed those all, I think.
No, we have not, those are still in the works, and what I did when I was in the preparing stage for the warrant?
Yeah.
And I contacted town council to make sure I didn't need, needed to include them, she said, absolutely not, but she should reread them before we accept them, to make sure that they're.
Okay, because I thought we had accepted them.
We're at the, with the final stage, because there was some miss, we were under pressure, at least I was, that we may have had need to go to the legislative body, but the town council said, no, absolutely not, it stops, the buck stops with us.
Okay.
Yep.
When are we going to plan on getting those?
Just shortly there.
At the town meeting.
Town meeting, okay.
Be one of our first.
But that was one of the things that I was asking, or I was asking the same thing, because I was worried, that they shouldn't be.
I actually thought we signed them in the spring for some reason, that's why I was asking the chief for.
No, they, they came back twice, and they, they made one, they made one draft and then another draft in the final, so they had two drafts. Okay, continuing on, next item in the inbox is the Boston Post Kane during the town meeting event, I like to, we have, we have, one of the selectmen, we can present it, and I, since it is a family member of one of the, Mrs. Crosby's has it, correct? And we're going to re-present it?
Yeah, we're going to present it at town meeting, Mrs. Crosby and Catherine Bellwell has passed away, as we said earlier.
Yeah, okay, and the thing is, I, if you recall, we made the font, especially big for you, David, I recommended it.
Perfect, I'm thinking that should be new standard town font.
Oh, my God.
We just have to recommend that there'll be some trees cut down to split the paper needs.
Right, we'll have that package.
That's yours.
Okay.
That was just a tool that I thought would be helpful for the speaker.
Too many chairs, you only use one sheet.
Yeah. But I wanted to get a commitment from you, David.
Do you want a folder, and you can leave it right in your basket until the day?
I wouldn't hurt anything, you know. But no, I would like to read the backup pages.
Oh, yeah, to familiarize yourself with it, okay.
All right, I got a verbal, this, the next item is memorandum, letter of concern from the library director about the alarm system, fire alarm and smoke alarms not really working, and I think what she's asking for, she liked to have a service call with All-Star, the monitoring company, to come out and actually do a top-to-bottom review, because there were, I think some excuses in the past, it was too cold and they weren't working right, well, if it's, if it's too cold, the, we can't shut off firearms and smoke alarms if it's too cold, that means they need to replace it better once, I think. So, I think a top-to-bottom review is definitely worthwhile.
Yeah, she sent us a snap picture of it, it says frozen, supervise, and I think that, you know, the cold weather's no excuse for that not to work, if we lose a building, I think so, you know, after reading this, I think that we definitely should reach out and get that done right away.
Yep.
I think we can do that, we don't have to wait for the, we just go ahead and get that done.
Absolutely, yeah.
That's a, that's a.
Yeah.
People will use that building life safety issue too.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll leave that to you for actually. All right, this is an FYI, this is, if there are any undeliverable, are you going to come back to us on the town reports?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. And then we got a, a letter from, email from the chief, talking about some telephone work on break five, was there an issue there? Oh, that was just an FYI. Okay. That was just in case somebody called to complain, I wanted you to have a bathroom. Okay, just, Bob, did you see?
Yes, so.
Okay, and this goes back to Lean. Gentlemen, I just want to share the news that we have nine applicants for the zoning administrator, zoning planning, building department administrative assistant, and the close date was Monday, and I think at the nine, it should be reviewed whether it be, there's a possibility we narrow it down to four to five candidates, but I want them to be ranked ordered, the people making the rank order will be one selectman, the zoning board chair, the planning board chair, and the administrator, town administrator, and then based upon that interview process, this will be conducted, spaced apart.
Yeah.
And then that committee will rank order the remaining candidates and present them to the board of selectmen for final approval.
We.
Okay, the thing is, I like to volunteer, since I'm the planning board, selectmen's director, I'd like to volunteer to be on that particular committee, I want to make sure we have consensus with that.
Yeah.
That's another problem.
Okay, and then, as I said, we'll come back to the, after we make the initial cut, four to five candidates, we're not establishing a firm cut line, because there may be candidates very close to each other.
Yeah, or if there's three to four, or three, like you had the first time, it's fine to, now, when you come down to the, to three or four, however many you decide on.
Right.
We all going to sit on the panel at that point?
Probably not, I think is what, what we learned, if anything, it's a little intimidating, but we'll rank order them, and you have, you will all have the resumes to review, and some of the logic of the gentleman, of myself, and the two chairs of the committee, and Lean of their opinions, they'll be available for their opinions, and they can talk pros and cons of each candidate. But the thing is, I think having one person in the hot seat and having like six, seven people looking at the person is almost intimidating, and I think we had one person almost in tears last time, and so I think, I think it might be a better process.
Should we just have, can I not show up?
No, I'm just kidding. No, but, oh, so be it, but so that's work in progress.
Give them a jab now.
Oh, absolutely.
And that'll be your package to take home.
Yes, okay. All right, I'm going to open up for public comment, that's the end of the mailbox/business for, town business for tonight, I'm going to come back to the board with some additional town business after public comment.
Nope.
Okay, all right, I'm going to bring it back to the board, I just closed public comment, I'm going to start with Lean, what do you have for the board?
Just a couple of items, as you know, the annual reports have arrived, they've been delivered to the post office, residents will, can expect them in their mailboxes within the next four business days in the time period that's required. I'll post this on our website electronically, for those who want to just view it in a PDF format. You talked about Boston Post Kane, and Dave, you'll speak on that.
Yeah.
I'll let Rennie know that you will be the speaker, he does, was asking who would be speaking on that, and then one other item, because the building department is now getting busy with applications, we had three that needed to be reviewed, one of which we determined needed to be withdrawn, and the other two are still in the application stages. There's critical steps of, to make sure that we are going through the process legally, One of which is noticing the butters and noticing the notice to public places, that type of thing. And whereas I've been trying, I've been spending a lot of time in the building department. I'm I'm going to utilize additional hours from the building department budget. To augment that process of certified mail so that until that full time position is filled, because that will be their their job.
Yeah.
Only because it's falling back on me that in that absence that it gets done according to the R S A. So I'm going to rely on the girls in my office. They want extra hours.
I agree with that and I think that, you know, that department or that all that department is paying for that. We have money in the budget for it. There's no reason you should be asking somebody to do something for free when you could, you know, pay them. Because the the person that hires that department is going to get paid to do that job anyway.
Correct.
I'm in agreement with what you do.
And like and like what I said, right now it's on my plate and and you know.
And it shouldn't be on your plate because your plate is going to start getting fuller and fuller if you keep that up. So I think that putting it to some of your girls for the extra hours and.
I mean, it's only temporary. Obviously, it'll be part of.
So we hire a person and that's in the works.
Yeah, yeah. Hopefully in the next month.
Do we have consensus on that?
Sure.
No, then that's all I have for today.
Okay, I'm going to bring it to the selectmen now. Dave, I'll let you go first.
I just wanted to let you know as a board, lean and I spoke about looking at the balance of the work in the town hall score. I've taken the recite set of plans. I'm going to review them. I'm going to go look at the scope of work that's completed up there. And try and help her with developing.
I like to when I think the next the concurrent step should be discussion with the lawyer. If the lawyer is going to go to court, what are the exact steps, requirements, information that the lawyer is going to require for her to go to court and win?
I know that in in order for us to be successful, we'll have to have at least one written bid. To to complete the balance of that work so that they'll have a dollar figure. And the town will be safe with a dollar figure. So if we get more than one estimate, we obviously will. But I think that we at least need that for the balance, so.
Could could another way of achieving that is that remember we had three bids in the previously.
Yeah.
If someone went up there and made with a with a title, like an engineer went up there and said, it's thirty five percent done. Or let's say it's fifty five percent done, take an average of the bids, remaining bids. And you say it's forty five percent done, that means fifty five percent of the remaining dollars could be out.
The problem like that, lean has already tried that run into is an engineer is somebody that develops a design on the project. But they're not familiar with looking at how far along the project is a lot of times.
Well, who who what subject matter person would be?
Like a construction manager or a.
Okay.
Construction.
Yeah.
Owner supervisor.
Right.
I'm going to start the process and if I think we need some help in clarifying some sections, we will. But I think it's going to be pretty clear, cut and dry because I think they did most of the wood installation.
Yeah.
But they didn't do the steel installation. We know the steel needs to be refabricated, then installed. So I think we might be able to come up with using the existing plan.
Yep.
A good request for pricing from contractors into the steel portion.
And that would be to include the cost of the steel.
Yeah.
Right, cost of the steel, cost of fabrication, cost of.
Installation.
Installation, yeah.
And and in our in our request for pricing, we'll also have in there a line item that will have. An engineer come back out and look at the installation, make sure it's done properly.
Oh, right.
And that new price.
But I think is at the same time, I thought one of the main goals was just to potentially coop some dollars from this company that defaulted on us and look at some other options down the road.
Right, but I don't think we can go to court without having that correct.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. So the thing is, but the thing is, at the same time, I think concurrently, Dave does his thing. We got to talk to the lawyer too. She's got to feel comfortable with.
She does have the.
Information what we provided her.
She does have a reach out to the town attorney.
Okay, will I have a comment on that?
No, no comment.
It's a good time of year for me. There's no bees up there now and it's cool enough to be up in there, so.
And since you're.
You know, the major issue, the major issue was the reconstruction of the steel and the number of perforations. Well, the number of fasteners that have to go on.
Which is on this revised plan.
Right, which I mean, Jules came in, gave them revised plan of how they could fast fast it with less. And I think it still was too much.
Yeah, and a lot of it is just getting at the eve within the wall meets eve. It's kind of a tight area.
Now, remember one thing, Bob, even though we get this request for pricing in and we get the pricing so we can finish our lawsuit. We may still determine a different way to go about it.
Right.
This would just finalize that lawsuit.
Agreed.
Try and close that portion of it.
Okay.
Okay, and then we might look at, you know, having an engineer look at it to do with wood.
Other options, yeah. Okay, so we get consensus there. All right, Dave, anything else?
Okay, you have to be here with me. I got a bunch of stuff.
Okay.
I'll do the first one. We approved, you know, reimbursing Roger Rice for attending N R R A.
Yeah.
Event and I don't think we did that, correct?
No, actually, we paid for his recertification. The approval to go to the N N R A was not approved.
Was not contingent upon our approval.
Correct, that was based on Woody's decision that he is part of the trustee. And he felt that he would have to attend it on his own behalf anyway, so that there wasn't.
He was going as a trustee.
Woody was going as a representative.
Correct, yeah.
Although I guess the concern was he represent he appeared to represent himself as a town of Dunbar.
Right.
But he's a trustee, so makes no difference.
But but is it, I don't know, was he saying when when they introduce themselves, are they saying where they live?
He's a.
Or where they.
Right, that's what I would think, you know.
That's what I would think and it was just in Woody's mind confusing.
Yeah, yeah.
So. Because it made it seem like he represented Dunbar, but he didn't, you know.
He might have said from Dunbar. I live in Dunbar.
Okay, so that addresses that one. The second one is we had some concerns from residents with the town pound. And the deterioration of one area. So I'm going to ask the selectmen on their own to go out and look at it. And I we've talked about this before, we you haven't found the easement yet, right?
No.
Because we want to read what the easement, if there are any restrictions or not. I know I have an easement on my property from the Army Corps of Engineer. It says they can, you know, they'll hold back water. I can do anything, but I can't put a building on it. So I just want to see what the easement reads, so I know exactly what, because we own the pound.
We do.
The town owns the pound.
Yeah.
So if if you know, if the walls are falling apart or whatever because of something, we should be addressing that. But we got to make sure that we're within whatever the easement reads. So I'd like to.
Right up north of town here.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm not I'm not familiar with it, no.
Okay.
It's a stone structure where they used to house animals that would get loose from the neighboring farms. And so if you were missing a cow or a pig and you didn't know where it was, you'd go to the town pound to look for it.
Cool, okay.
Yeah, and and it's a stone structure and I guess some of the stones are being pushed and shoved and.
Okay.
You know, so it's worth taking a look first. We'll examine it and we can discuss this because we're going to have to do something, you know.
Yeah, I would like to make sure that we have the right and that make sure the town before we walk around too much.
Well, we have that it belongs to the town and we have the easement where it is. Now, the only thing we have to find out is what the is there any restrictions or not in easement?
Did you say you've seen that easement? So we do.
I haven't, but she's started looking.
I think what I it's Bud Noise actually gave us that area and there's a description of an easement, but I think it's for utilities. And it describes thirty feet, but then it describes the area that measures where the town pounded, but there's no language. So I have to go back a couple of deeds, maybe the noise deeds to see if there's anything that might have gotten missed because it's changed hands. And sometimes that language gets dropped off.
Now, what corner specifically, Bob, are you, if you're looking at?
I guess there's a large tree that's growing and the roots are pushing through those stones.
Yeah.
And so it's compromising that wall on that side.
Okay.
You know, and it is a historic thing, you know.
So we'll go take a look at it.
So we need to look and see exactly what the damage is. We need to, you know, identify what's causing it. And within the easement, is there any restriction or not, you know, because we should be preserving it.
Right, preserve preserving it from a from a historical point of view, but not a functional point of view? Will.
Well, it's not, we don't use it to store animals.
Right.
You know, but it is historical. It's been in town for.
Okay. Forgive me for my ignorance. I just didn't. I was not aware.
Like like, for example, he wants to look at the even if the tree is growing on the outside of the wall. And coming to the inside, what's our rights to the tree?
Correct, correct. And that's what we want to make sure and it it may end up that we have to have a discussion with the parties involved.
Yeah.
You know, and and I don't know, because maybe the easement gives us, maybe we're within our rights with the easement.
Was this part of a resident?
Yeah, it's I don't know, but people have gone over to see it and were concerned with the way the tree is growing and knocked the wall down.
Okay, that's an action item that we still got.
And then they have a third one.
We're on the town pound.
Can I mention something like that? Tom pound?
Sure.
No?
No, sure, I said sure.
A few years ago, a group of us got together and cleaned that. And I don't know who put that together, but Jeff brought his chipper there, because what happens is trees are growing inside too.
The town chipper?
Yeah, we you got the town chipper and we chipped everything. We had it all cleaned up.
Something similar to what you did at the at the park, I mean, at the Campbell Pond area. You cleaned that cell a whole lot.
Yeah, right, well, we cleaned it all out inside.
Yeah.
And all the way around, except for one area.
Yeah.
We weren't allowed to go in that area. But anyways, we we cleaned the outside and the inside. Because the inside, I mean, that's definitely the towns.
Right.
So we cleaned all that up and chipped it all and it was good, but that was like, I don't know, ten, fifteen years ago.
Okay.
So I don't know. I don't. It's been a while. So just to say, it's growing inside too, see?
Yeah.
So you want to look at that.
So obviously it requires some maintenance. We want to see where our rights are and our rights are not.
Yeah.
Maybe we make it part of the maintenance program where they clean leaves here, that they go up there and clean leaves or something.
Yeah.
But I mean, because there is a significant tree that's growing and we should be looking at that too. And that's why knowing what's in the easement.
Yeah. Gives us a starting point.
Gives us an area that either we have a right to do something or we have to negotiate with someone as to what happens with whatever is there.
Okay.
And the third one is, and you have a copy of this in front of you and I don't expect you to do anything tonight other than bring this up. And if we have a workshop or we do something on the personnel plan. Okay, and I found out this week because Woody checked and they found out that we don't have to pay three hours as the state law is. But the state law, that has to do with private entities. And municipalities and towns don't have to pay three hours show up time. However, in our personnel plan, it says if someone's called in for emergency, and so that would be a call in. When the guy calls the day before and says, can you come in two hours? And I think it's unfair that somebody has to give up part of a day for two hours pay. They might as well get the three hours pay and at the same time, let's I.
What portion of this are we supposed to be looking at?
Okay, there should be a section in this.
Work week, work hours, the last line.
Yeah, yeah. See if an employee is called in for emergencies.
Correct.
Well, you know, if they're calling in a guy the day before to come in, as far as I'm concerned. He didn't need him. He wasn't scheduled to work, so it could be interpreted the same way as as that.
I actually thought we were kind of on consensus to that last week anyway, Bob.
Well, we are now. We are with that. We we made a commitment, you know.
Yeah, so I think.
My point is.
Our town meeting were covered, right?
Right, but I like.
Consensus.
I like to clear this up and and I go one step further. If they're going to have a call ins, they should do it by seniority. The people who've been there the longest amount of time at least have an opportunity to be on the list and be called in. And they can refuse it. They can go down the list till they get someone to come in.
That's a great idea.
You know. And we don't have a standard work time. And I have a concern, okay, I have a concern because if someone goes to the transfer station, is working by himself at six thirty in the morning and they get hurt. There's nobody coming in for quite a while, if they're coming in that day.
Yeah, but for a snowmobile, they're in there doing.
And I understand that part, but I'm talking about when the transfer station is operating. I can understand them coming in just before the public comes in like they do now. But there's sometimes that people go in at six thirty in the morning by themselves and I don't think it's a good thing.
Now.
It's a safety.
Are you only talking about the transfer station in reference to that?
Well, you know, before we go into that with standardizing it, I'd like to talk to, and there's not a whole lot of departments here. Because the elected officials are the elected officials. They control their own hours. But you have your office, lean, to just to make sure we're not stepping on anybody's feet.
Yeah.
And the police is a whole different entity.
Yeah.
The fire department is a whole different entity too, but you have that, you have Public Works. Now, Jeff is usually there. They're usually standardized, you know.
They have standard hours there.
But this the transfer station is kind of odd with some of the times people go in.
They kind of juggle those hours for a four day work week. And they're they're juggled for the different hours that they're open. And then the different hours that they need to work to make sure that it's prepped for when they open again. So in other words, sometimes they work a lot more the day before if they have a lot of product and then sometimes they don't.
Well, it isn't, the problem is it's not just, it's not if a group of people. And you can actually do your work within the time that you structure people to work at.
Yeah.
But it's when someone goes in by themselves and it's an early hour or it's a day when no one else is around. It's a little bit problematic. You might be able to schedule that on a day when there's other people there.
There is something, if someone's operating any machinery, they're a single person by themselves. It's just kind of, does it make sense that they should have two people there, at least one watching out for the other? Knowing that a person is out back working, one of the compactors or whatever.
Well, especially if someone goes in and they get hurt and then they get to try to fill out a report. And then the your workers comp prime X says, where's where's, do you have a witness? Well, how do we know that this didn't happen on or off the job, you know?
I mean, but like.
Didn't we have an assessment of the whole department? I don't think I've ever seen a report back from.
Yeah, well, the department had got one, I think, or maybe hasn't got it yet.
I don't know.
But we have that situation all the time in the highway department because you have a single person coming in to work there a lot. But their supervisor doesn't work the same hours always.
That's true.
So we have that situation always there. In a small town, I think that's going to be hard to avoid myself, but we can definitely look at it.
Yeah, it's just it's not something to decide tonight. It's something to look at and see if we can structure something. It's a little bit fairer.
And looking at this sentence here. An employee called in to work for emergencies or call in.
I would, you know, I would I would strike the word emergency when we when when we debate this or.
Just for call in and call in hours?
For call in hours and and just leave it that way because they're not called in the week before. It's not like they're scheduled to work. They get called in the night before or they might get called in that same day. And and the problem with somebody saying no is the fact that there may be intimidation because they feel, you know. Geez, if I say no, it's.
But I don't mind leaving emergencies in there and then putting an and or called in because emergencies arise and it's helpful to have that.
But rather than discuss this tonight, this is just food for thought. Just think about it, you know, because you may even change whatever you want to do.
Right, sure.
And then we can either have a workshop.
Yeah.
Because we've done that before, you know.
Thing is.
And address some of the concerns.
I I agree. I agree that there were a couple of issues boiling up in the in the personnel menu I wanted to address too.
Really?
Yep.
Okay.
Pay schedules for one. I will I look at the pay rates. I think some of the positions I want to review again. Specifically part timers. That was one of my concerns.
You want to bring them down?
I will, yeah, I want to just bring them down to minimum wage.
People are going to be vote for you every day.
Did I say double minimum wage?
They like it.
No, but the thing is, the thing is, someone pointed out to me that, you know, we have a lot of part timers. I think is we don't, we pay full timers benefits, but we pay part timers a minimum, close to minimum wage, a small, there's a minimum wage. A shallow wage without benefits. And I remember I brought the idea earlier in the year. I said, you know, what about making them full timers? And the thing is, I I got a lot of some collegial pushback in the sense that.
You're going to get it again too.
Thing is, what what now I'm looking at ideas to look at, what do we do to increase the turnover? You're always going to have some turnover, but the thing is, especially when someone's offered a job with benefits or to advance themselves.
But do remember, we did look at the chart that we had looking at other employees in other similar sized towns. And I thought that we were on the uprend of most of them.
Yeah, on the uprend.
So again, I just want to look at that.
But it doesn't hurt to revisit some of those stuff.
So that was, I think, a mini workshop would do it a while.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, after the election, gentlemen?
Yeah.
After the election. And and for the record, it was double the minimum wage, right?
But it would be worthwhile if you can find a pound and all you got to do is if you're going over towards Mills.
I'm going to I'm going to have my selectman pro temp show me the way.
Let them take you over because and it's made out of stone, so you can tell that it looks.
Okay. No, I'm looking at the chief. I'm saying, do you know? No, I'm looking at the chief, I'm saying, do you know we have a pound? I'm saying, all right, where do we lock up in the pound?
He knows, he tried to bring my oxen over there.
Oh, or John's horse, was he running through the town here a long ago?
Yeah, we had horses and oxen, we got a lot of these, yeah.
Who says we don't use it anymore?
We had icks.
I think that's it right now.
Icks last year.
Yeah, we had swine on the lamb a few years ago.
Okay, I got to bring this back, some resemblance of war back here. I want to talk about, um, let's talk about the elections coming up very soon. It's about two weeks out, I think we can, next week we can finalize the times, correct? Showing up and all that kind of stuff? Because it's, it's still, we're still two weeks out, so I think we'll, we'll confirm all the times we're going to meet and all that kind of stuff next, next week, next week. Okay.
So we'll have that on our agenda for next week.
We're actually one week out, one meeting out.
Right.
And then the following Tuesday's town meeting.
Right, so next
So have that on our agenda for next week?
To confirm, confirm up the time, reporting times and confirm up, uh, when we want to be there, when we don't want to be there, et cetera. Who's bringing coffee and stuff like that?
That's right, that would work.
Okay. I know I would incentivize you.
He's only looking for votes, big man.
You can bring your coffee, you know, that's just
We can vote after that, right, Bob?
Yeah. Okay, um, gentlemen, I'm, I'm funded, I, it's, uh, not eight o'clock and I think is, uh, I already did that.
You did?
Yes, ma'am.
Did we have any non-public?
I did, did you say anything?
No one had any?
Nope. Okay.
Chief, just, uh, when you're ready to come to the board as far as that investigation, you let us, let Lean know and we'll put you in non-public when that time comes.
I thought that's what I was doing tonight.
Oh, you do want to go to the non-public?
Non-public?
Yeah, I, I think, I'll give you, I'm working on it, I've been in touch with the complainant, he knows I'm working on it, it's not done.
Would you rather wait till it's a little more complete?
I think I can give you just a, a little update.
Non-public.
If you don't want to do it, we can
No, no, no.
We've, we've got time tonight, so. I'll make a motion that we go to non-publics.
I asked you.
Hold on, we've
In the parking lot.
For RSAS, NDL1 dash A, point B, Runeral 2, paragraph, it's up here, we'll find out what it is. It's going to be B, C is a C. Yeah.
Okay, Dave. No, I think it's C.
I think C was employee.
No, C is matters.
Containing perpetuation.
Yeah, clearly C.
Okay.
So it's
Right here.
Yeah, that one right there, C.
Okay, I second that, then we're going to vote on it?
No, yes.
Kaminsky, yes?
Bartel, yes.
And who seconded that, sorry?
I did, Kaminsky seconded.
I made the motion.
And the time was at eight fifty, eight fifty-four?